Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Board of Selectmen in January. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table to my right. This is a regular meeting. It is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call in any interested attendee to raise question or make a brief comment on any matter that's before the Board today. We have a relatively lean agenda today. We are still considering changes to the senior tax relief ordinance and we expect to spend some time on that. In addition, we have minutes from our last two regular meetings, the first one being...
Actually, it's just January 10th.
Okay, just, okay. So we still have to do the 20th for January 10th, our last regular meeting, and I would entertain any changes to those. I'm going to move to the second. So item number two, quickly run through some updates. On January 15th, I was one of five participants in a program held in Stanford with the commercial real estate community. It was part of Fairfield Five. And really, the focus of that was to emphasize what is the role of Fairfield Five as it relates to Fairfield County. A lot of questions were asked by these individuals who are really leasing space in the commercial area to, within the region. The focus, of course, is we're trying to present a united front for Fairfield County and what it has to offer. And as you listen to each of the other chief elected officials, you realize that we do share a lot of attributes and similarities, and then we also have some distinctions. I think overall, again, reinforcing what the Fairfield Five is, is it's an informal organization. It has no legal bearing, but it is a collaborative to promote southwestern Connecticut and Fairfield County specifically, and look at the positives that we do have here, and there are many in terms of educational institutions, existing corporate presence, cultural and so forth. We've opened the door to conversations with the new administration, and I think overall the message that I presented there is that we want to be positive about what's taking place. There is a lot of positive activity, and I think when people are looking and prospecting, they want to be part of something that has positive energy, not the negative. So that, I think, was an integral part in talking to a room of about, I would say, 150 to 200. One of the speakers was gracious and pointed out the fact that they liked that this was a bipartisan group, and frankly, you didn't know who, if you didn't put a label, which there were none, you didn't know who was an elephant or who was a donkey, but it was all about what's best for the community. So there'll be more of that going forward with the Five, and I'm encouraged by what we're seeing, and thank Mayor David Martin and his office for being the constant and coordinating these sessions with various groups, whether it be the legislators, whether it be the business community, whether it be the state administration. On the 16th, I had a discussion with the Subcommittee of the RTM, the Appointments Committee, and the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, as well as the Office of the First Selectmen, as they're looking to streamline the nominating process. That process is fairly prescribed in Charter. It's something that they would like to see codified further. What I was envisioning from this meeting was to get all the parties in the room and to explain what they do presently, how they do it. And what I came away with is that we have a very good system. It can be tweaked, but a lot of it is communication and that flow of communication. I think the good story is that we have a lot of civic engagement in helping us identify people to serve on town boards, which I would say personally is the strength of the town, but also something we shouldn't take for granted, because these are not easy roles. These are fiduciary roles where people are asked to put in a lot of time and address a lot of important issues, and we want to make sure that we're respectful of people when they come forward and, you know, not make them go through five hoops and two hurdles to give of their time. So I think we're striking a balance on that. I was really impressed with this year's YWCA Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Program led by Mary Lee Kiernan. The topic this year was labor trafficking. For those who are not familiar with this, as I was not as intimately aware, this is an issue that really touches every community. In fact, I would say perhaps more so a community like ours. There was representatives from various advocacy agencies or organizations, as well as the Department of Labor, and they talked very specifically the steps they take to go and investigate suspected violations in use of minors or exploitative practices, and they will shut the businesses down. So what they said to look at is, for example, nail salons were listed as one of the larger purveyors of this, along with illicit massage parlors, food service, construction, were in order of magnitude. But if you go to a business and you see a half a dozen or more employees just standing around, and you don't see the volume, you have to begin to wonder, how do they support that economic model? Like, why do they have so many people? You should ask the question of the employees, are you being compensated fairly for your wage? If you suspect something, contact the Department of Labor and say that you suspect that there's something just not right about what's taking place, and they'll go out and they'll do these spot inspections. But it is prevalent, particularly given our proximity to Manhattan, and they mentioned specifically Flushing Queens as an area where these workers are coming and being brought in from. So again, I thought it was really well done, because really, when you think about the broad and deep message about Dr. King, and, I mean, workers' rights, exploitation of people, in addition to, you know, fighting intolerance and prejudice, but the exploitation is what's taking place. And it's quite dramatic from what these individuals who have been working on this have shared. The 22nd, which was Tuesday, went out to Riverside Avenue. There's been an ongoing concern about pedestrian and traffic safety as it relates to three institutions: Hill House, which is a senior assisted residence, the Children's Day School in St. Catherine's Church, which also houses the alternative high school called Winrose. And basically, what they're looking for there is a realignment of the crosswalks in the installation of the flashing crosswalk signs. The problem is there are currently three crosswalks within a short vicinity, so from an adherence of traffic flow, you know, you have to think you can't put light, flashing lights each one. The solution, and I think everyone keen to, a way with it is that to put in one realigned crosswalk with those lights directing people from the various parking lots on the east side of Riverside Avenue. People cross to the west. Particularly of concern is the parents with young children crossing to drop the kids off at the Children's Day School. Jim Michael was there to lay out the maps. This is something, again, that's been in discussion for some time. Representatives of the church were there, talking about what they could do on their property to open up the pedestrian access so that when you're walking, the sidewalk is here, they also could put a sidewalk in the interior so that you get people off the roadway. It was a very, I thought, productive, constructive and solution-oriented session. Yesterday, in this room, we had more than 60 third graders from Old Greenwich School. The students received tours from the Town Clerk's Office and the Record Vault, as well as the Health Department and the Laboratory Operations. This is an annual event, and I have to tell you, each year, each class has a different characteristic or nature about them. This one, I have to say, had the most deeply profound questions. And one young lady, I told her to come tonight to the public hearing, she wants to know pointedly, will we be putting synthetic turf fields at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center? Because she supports them. I said, wonderful. I said, well, come tomorrow night and tell us that, because that's part of the process. But they asked very, you know, relevant questions, and what we provide to them is an organizational chart put together by the leading women voters, and highlighting, like, the core services that the government provides, and then some of the Boards and Commissions that also provide services. So they get a sense of the fact that this is a volunteer system, in that government is here to serve people, it's a service organization, and protecting, you know, life is very critical to that in civil society and education. And I told them to speak up about education, because they're the beneficiaries of it. And interestingly, I asked them if they thought their class sizes were too large, just right, or too small. Barbara, I think they said...
The majority thought they were just right.
Just right. They were just right. It was interesting to get the perspective, so. Bright group of kids, third grade. This coming week, we have the inaugural Winrose Winter Sales Days, which actually begins tomorrow and continues through the weekend. There are more than 100 businesses, galleries and restaurants throughout the town that are participating. This is an effort led by Tammy Kettler as a member of our Economic Advisory Committee, and one that ties very closely to the Experience Greenwich Week and the Holiday Stroll. So thank you, Tammy, for that. Tomorrow, the YWCA is hosting their Women Who Inspire Luncheon, and we want to publicly congratulate Stephanie Cowie, Janice Treby Richards, Stephanie Schabell, and Catherine Adasi, and two high school students, Isabel Allard and Sydney Noble, as well as Corporate Honore East Stanford Health, who are being recognized tomorrow by the YW. And this is an integral part of the YW's mission, is empowering women, and not only empowering them, but recognizing their achievements in our, in our community. This evening, at 6 o'clock, I'll be presenting the budget. I do want to give a great deal of gratitude and thanks to the Departments, because really, it's the Boards, Commissions, Departments, the Departments reporting to OFS, who work on this and work with the Town Administrator to bring together budgets that are honest and reflect the sentiments that the citizens desire, and that is reinforced through the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. So I would say this is certainly a level service budget, meaning there's nothing in this town budget that I can point to that shows a diminution of service, and in certain areas, I could tell you that it actually increases service through the support we're providing to non-government organizations, such as the YW, to continue their domestic abuse prevention and education programs in our schools. So we're actually increasing the amount, as was my commitment to them several years The areas that are driving the real increases are not unknown, just to be blunt. There are healthcare, pension, and providing for legal fees and legal insurance risk and so forth. Those are areas where we've seen escalation. I think it's important to note, when people complain about that or say, well, it's gone up, stop, pause and think. What are we hearing from states that have issues? They didn't fund these obligations. We're actually funding our obligations. We should be proud of that, not lament, well, it went up 8%. So the fact is, they're being funded because they're required to be, and we're being honest. So I think we'll see what people have to say tonight at the public hearing, but I just want to thank everybody who contributes to it, and will be, over the next several weeks, meeting with the BET Budget Committee. On February 4th, for those who are specifically interested in the Northwest Fire and EMS Station, there is going to be a very specific presentation overhead with the work that's been done since September to make the case for this resource. I do want to commend Ben Branyan, Tracy Schiedinger from GEMS, as well as our Fire Chief and Assistant Chief, along with Blaze Levitont, who've been working with the various stakeholders, as well as the representatives from District 10. Actually, we're going to be giving the representatives from District 10 somewhat of a preview of our presentation in advance, so they can give us feedback if there are any areas that require further tweaking. But again, this is about life safety and an identified need. On the 31st, we'll be swearing in four new fire recruits at 10:00 AM at the Public Safety Complex. On January 31st, we will be discussing the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center project at the Annual Meeting of the Riverside Association. This will be held at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center at 6:30. It's at 7? It's at 7, but I would come at 6:30, just because it's about 200 people are, give up to 200 people. And who's going to be there? It's going to be the Parks Department Administration, Recreation Division specifically, and members of the Advisory Board, who've been working on this. There is money in the budget to advance the design. That's a collaborative process. Community engagement has been an integral part, but it's time to move that forward. And finally, on that subject, I'm open to taking suggestions of individuals that anyone here or listening knows of, who would like to be part of a, I call it a task force, although I don't really like that name, but to help identify individuals who can be part of an initiative to identify corporate sponsorship for some of these recreation, leisure, human benefit projects. I'm going to acknowledge Patricia Burns here, because she's Chair of the Commission on Aging, and she's doing that for them, and she does a superb job. Now I'm looking for the corporate sponsors, which I think are not novel. Other communities do it. We've been shy about it in the past, but I think we have with the talent here. We've got a lot of talent. My friend here, Sandy, who have that ability to think, we should be able to put together a portfolio of those investments that these companies can make. And I'm ballparking, looking at our budget now, say $50 million, and we have to make the case as to what's in it for them, you know? Who will it benefit? How will it benefit them from a, from a business point of view? You get your name on something in a community of 62,000 people, globally recognized, and you make a difference in the lives of people who don't have the advantage of going to some of the more private institutions or private clubs. These are public resources. So that's something I'd like to see us work on in the next few months, because I really think there's potential. On February 1st, I said publicly, I think Ken, you reported this, but I will be making my intentions known whether or not I will be continuing to seek this position. I believe I scheduled it for 3:30, and it's an open event. There has been considerable discussion about an event that is scheduled to take place here next Wednesday evening. It is an event that is being organized by an individual who lives in town, who is a product of the town's school system, served in the military, but also has a very controversial past in terms of comments made, incendiary comments, prejudicial comments, and ones that frankly don't reconcile with who, who we are as a town, or who I am, or any of us. At the same time, the genesis for this is to have a town meeting format, and so we all are here, we make judgments. I have made the judgment that I think when you present the idea that you want to have a town meeting, and you want to have a discussion of various points of view, I embrace that, and I embrace it because I truly believe we've seen a degradation of civil discourse in our society. We've seen people resort to name-calling, hateful comments, just, I would say juvenile comments. Perhaps I'm naive in thinking that this will not occur here, because I hold Greenwich to a higher standard. We're known for civility. We're known for tolerance. We're known for embracing diversity, and we're known for respecting one another. So my, my view is this event should take place with the understanding that they have an obligation to prove the detractors wrong. And I am going not to necessarily endorse the organizers, but to promote what the expectation and what the values of this community are. It would be easy for me to succumb to saying no, but at the same time, then, I think we're putting, we're turning out the spotlight on something that I think needs to happen. And I think, you know, there's an expression that one of our RTM members uses that, you know, her late grandmother was, great-grandmother was a suffragette, Elizabeth Catty Stanton, is that sunshine is the best disinfectant. And again, I'm speaking now personally. I think putting a spotlight on people to prove otherwise is important, and to also accept that there are divergent points of view, and people have to learn to accept the fact that there are, and debate them civilly. As an example, I saw that our new state senator has had meetings throughout the district, and there were some guidelines that she issued, and those guidelines include things like no signs. I happen to agree with her on that, because I don't think that really adds anything to it, other than I know you're yes or no, but it's deeper than that. Two, come with your opinions but based by facts and cite your sources. You know, obviously, no yelling and so forth. I think that's a, that, I'm endorsing what she's doing, because I think that's a positive reinforcement of the type of dialogue we like to see. In addition, this individual, and this is, again, getting deeper than my qualifications, is someone who obviously has been affected by life experience. He's openly acknowledged he was raped at the age of 11. He's openly acknowledged his issues within combat in the Gulf and Middle East, in what he was trained to do, and he has said he regrets these statements. Well, I'm a believer in redemption. I'm also a believer in if we're going to talk about second chance society, we're going to talk about restorative justice, we should think in terms of, are we going to apply that across the board for everyone? And therefore, I'm supporting it to go forward with that, knowing that he's to provide for the requirements of insurance, and he's also required to provide for payment of security here at his cost to do so. I know that my good friend Sandy has a different point of view, and I also would like to thank him, because he was kind enough to call me on something else, and he gave me some good, I want to say fatherly advice, or lawyerly advice.
That's better. I'll go with the lawyer.
But again, and I said to John and Sandy in email, like, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but at the same time, it really speaks to a bigger issue. And in concluding, I'd say, like, what I see as different is, we're three different people. We happen to have different affiliation for purposes of why we're here, but if you notice, we very rarely have any major disagreements or incendiary comments. It's just such a difference from what's happened when you start to talk about much larger, you know, national issues. And I think, again, naively, I think we could change that here. I really do. I'm hopeful. Perhaps I'll be proven wrong, but if we can't, then I have to say, I'm usually an optimistic person. I'm very pessimistic about the future if people can't engage in civil, tolerant and respectful discourse.
Well, as Peter said, and as everyone knows, I, well, two things. One, everyone knows that I disagree with the decision Peter has made here. I have told him that, and he understands that. What everyone doesn't know is that I respect Peter, and I respect his decisions. I think on this one, he's misguided, and the reason I think he's misguided is pretty I have no problem with, and quite to the contrary, I'm all for this individual or any individual having the right to free speech. This is essential. They can say whatever they like within the confines of the Constitution. The issue here is we have someone who is, I would say, an avowed racist, a person who has been homophobic, misogynist, sexist, and has openly said that. To be sure, as Peter said, he now says, I regret that. I don't doubt that he regrets it. He's lost his job. He's probably the only man who was too racist for the Trump administration and has been ousted. I don't doubt he regrets it, but you know, you don't, someone once said to me when I was a child, and I said, I broke the clock, my father's clock, and I said, I'm sorry. And he said, sorry doesn't fix the clock. And saying you're sorry is fine. If you act like you're sorry, if you make amends, if you go out there not to hold a thing at town hall to express your views, whatever they may be, but if you go out there and you help the Muslim community, if you go out there and you help the Me Too movement, if you go out there and you celebrate Martin Luther King, then I'm okay. Sorry doesn't cut it with me, nor do I have any reason to believe that he really is. And I guess my problem, Peter, and I know you know this, because I've said it to you privately, I'll say it publicly, is not, again, that he speak. When Peter says this Greenwich stands for integration, Greenwich stands for tolerance, Greenwich stands for community, I agree with him, but that's not what this person stands for, and that is why I am troubled by two things. One, utilizing our town hall for which our taxpayers, the overwhelming majority of whom I believe would agree with me and reject the avowed language of this person. And two, and I've told Peter this, I believe that he and Fred Camillo are making a mistake. They are legitimizing someone who should not be legitimized. They are giving an imprimata that should not be given, and while Peter has every right as an individual to feel the way he does, and again, I admire his optimism, I truly, truly do. I just think it's unfounded in this case. I hope he's right and I'm wrong. I truly do. But even if that is true, I do not believe that town officials or an elected representative should give legitimacy. When as and if there is evidence to substantiate a change, a conversion of this person from what he has said he is to what he should be, I'm all for it. I'll embrace him too. One last comment. He has made the comment that I have criticized him, which I have, I just have again, and that I've analogized him to David Duke by saying, no more than I would welcome David Duke to Greenwich would I welcome Carl Higbee. And he said, but you haven't even met me. And I say, you're right, and I haven't met David Duke either, but I don't have to meet you to know what you stand for. What you stand for is what you've said, and what you stand for is what you've done. What you stand for is what you've said, and what you stand for is what you've done. And until you do something different, it does not cut it with me. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you. Our silent partner. Every good group has to have a silent partner, right?
Well, he's like the fiddler on the roof. The rabbi stands there, and one guy says, it's black. He says, you're right. The other guy says, it's white. He says, you're right. The third guy says, they both can't be right. He says, you're right too.
Okay, so moving to our agenda. We have, again, before us, the request to re-adopt the senior tax relief ordinance, as well as an additional item that relates to tax relief, which we'll get into, and that has legislatively been passed by this Connecticut General Assembly. But under old business, we have number four, re-adoption of the senior tax relief ordinance. This board has been very clear in that it expects to include people who have disability, as well as looking at expanding the income eligibility to take advantage of this. So I request our representatives from the commission, who are bringing this forward, share with us what they've learned in terms of being able to present to the other governing bodies this desired request to expand in any data that was discerned that would help us make our case.
Good morning. I'm Kip Bergweger, a member of the Commission on Aging. We have with us Patricia Burns, the Chair, and Ray Catodino, who is the Executive Director, and they've informed me this morning that, to date, we've not been able to find any basis, any facts that will explain or tell us what the effect on the total tax relief would be created by increasing the upper limit for credit in terms of income. So, the maximum income that we see for people 65 and older right now is $66,000, and we don't have any facts that will tell us what it would be if it went up to $71,000 or $76,000. We would like to request that we get an opportunity to pursue that further, because we are still working on the analysis, but not in terms of this current form of the ordinance, because this will expire on June 30th, and it needs to go before the BET and then the RTM. And the RTM meeting on June may be too late if it doesn't act on that date, so we'd like to do it, get to the RTM before June. May is the budget meeting, and nothing else is considered. So, our latest date for going to the RTM would be in April. In order to get on the April call, we have to submit this to the RTM by noon on March 15. So we really have a short period of time to finish the work here, and to go to the BET. So we would request that we stay with the figures that we have so far, and then, once we get this extended, come back and work on increasing the limits that you would desire. We also made a change in the provision to take into account people with permanent total disability. Now, the state law, which authorizes municipalities to create this tax credit, covers both seniors 65 years and older, plus spouses and others at different ages, or persons who are below age 65 with permanent total disability. And when this ordinance was first adopted, the town adopted the age credit, but not the disability credit. So we've taken the language from the state law, plugged it into the ordinance, so that it now covers both permanent disability and age 65 and older. I had put, I had taken it, the state law had, there are two provisions in state law that deal with both of these, and the version that was sent out a few days ago was taken from one part of this, one provision in state law, but it should have been the other, the counter one. So, we revised it and sent it, revised part out. It just changed, deleted one reference to the Office of Policy and Management. So it's really still exactly the same substance, but it now covers disability using the language straight from the state law. So we would respectfully request that you approve, you adopt it in this form, with the understanding that we will continue to work on developing the facts as to what the effect will be by increasing the amounts, and making other, whatever adjustments you might want to do, and bring that back here, and then to the BET and the RTM as soon as we can, but not delay going forward now, so that we can make the deadline for the RTM approval.
Kip, so just so, just so I'm clear, so our, and I appreciate and totally understand what you're saying about, you know, ensuring that what we do have in the disability get in, and that we don't jeopardize it. But as we look to try to achieve the objective, so we're looking to expand qualifying total annual income, so right now, it has $55,001 to $66,000. So, we would essentially be saying, let's just say $66,001 up to $90,000. And then there would be a requisite credit for that, which would be calculated. Is, am I right? I just want to understand, really what we're trying to do is add another, or broader income, qualifying income, correct?
Yes, you want to add another tier, possibly two tiers. I wouldn't suggest $90,000, because that is a huge jump, and it may result in a lot of resistance.
I don't think Peter was suggesting 90. He was just throwing that out as an illustration of a number.
We were talking more in terms of going up another, two increments of $5,000 and $5,000, so that the maximum income would then be, $71,000 would produce another level of credit, and $76,000 would produce another level of credit. Each of those would be a little bit less as the income increases.
I could just interject.
Oh, there you go. See, it doesn't get picked up unless you use the microphone.
So, I think the overreaching question and want is to give the most impact of the credit to those who most need it. So, even if we increase, let's say to $76,000, we also want to make sure that the people on the lower end actually get more, because they're the ones who, it's going to make a huge life-changing impact to.
Agree.
I think the key, and you guys have certainly focused on it, and I understand the time limitations, but the key, and I said this last time, so I'm repeating myself, knowing how hard it is, the key is getting the facts to support and substantiate this. Apart from the fact that you want the facts, and that this body needs the fact, you and I, and all of us know, it's not going to get past the BET, nor should it, or the RTM, if there isn't factual data to support it. Recognizing how difficult it is to get that data, and I do recognize that, we can act in the interim as you're requesting, but that should not be taken as a waiver of the notion that we do have to get the information. I could make the argument that even what's here, we have no substantial factual basis to substantiate this. Might as well take a dart and throw it at a dartboard. So, that's not the way we should operate.
No, and I think we agree.
I know.
We need, but we need the time to get that.
Yes, I fully understand.
I don't think, I don't think so. Is there anybody specific to this? I mean, so this would include, pardon me, the disability, okay, please, okay. And I didn't recognize you, Alan Gunsberg. You're the vice chair of the...
I'm the chairman of, you're the first elected advisory committee for people...
That much I know, you're the chairman of that, but you're also a member of our human services...
I'm a member of the board.
You're a member of the Human Services Board as well.
Right.
But yes, you're a very esteemed chair of our Disability Advisory Committee.
I agree with Ken. The low end of $26,000 of, pardon, microphone, sorry. The low end of $26,000 participating, that should go up. We can make a very big difference in many people's lives if it was $30,000, you get the highest amount of credit.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Right now, if you, if you make $26,000 or less, you get the highest credit.
Correct.
$2,600 and change.
Okay.
Right. I think that that number should be up to $30,000, so that people, even if they're making $30,000, can get a credit as high as almost, because it's a life-changing amount of money. It can change a whole month's worth of your budget.
Either that and/or, changing the amount of money that you get, even at the minimums at the level. So it could be any of those.
Yeah, any of those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, what we are voting on today, just so I am clear, just so that we're all on the same page, we're voting to extend the tax relief program. We're voting to make sure, or to provide that it will only be reviewed every 10 years, as distinct from the current, every five years. And we are voting to approve the schedule of relief and the levels, therefore, as provided on the sheet you've given us, including for the disabled, as we've just talked about. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to take a motion to adopt the amendments proposed for the senior property tax relief ordinance. So move.
Second.
Without objection.
And just to state the obvious, and with the understanding that in the interim, okay? Because so often, when things are done, the interim goes away. It should not.
The next item we have are under new business, and we're going to, pardon me, here from our tax collector who is here. As I mentioned, we were made aware of earlier this week, the state passed legislation that provides relief to federal workers impacted by the current federal shutdown in their, the impact that could have on their ability to pay property taxes. So, this is legislation that was adopted overwhelmingly. It is something I believe we all support, and we want to effectuate it here at the town level. Let's pull it up. We believe, based upon what we read in this legislation, that this is something that the Board of Selectmen can adopt without necessarily having to go to RTM. That is how we read it.
Thank you.
Our legal counsel, I was advised, may have a different interpretation, and we want to understand how that interpretation came about.
Do you have the... I don't have it either.
I know, I have it here. Here it is.
The municipality's, when it's a town meeting, if the board is elected, they may be able to establish the, you know, he is saying, well, whereas it's not, it's not a town, he's a representative town meeting, that's what he must be saying.
Howard, do you want to say anything? Or? You know what they say, give a politician a microphone.
And he'll talk forever.
There you go.
Okay, so, is this on? Yes.
But it could be cut off.
So, let me just read from the legislation quickly, and then the explanatory, and then tell you guys exactly what the town attorney and I discussed at 20 to 10 this morning. So this is HR 5765, which was passed on Tuesday, signed by the governor, to give, not tax relief, but just postponement to federal employees who are impacted by the partial shutdown of the United States government. So reading from the legislation, it says, notwithstanding the provisions of the general statutes or of any special act charter, special act charter, home rule ordinance, local ordinance, or other local law, any municipality is defined in section 7-148 of the general statutes, or any subdivision of a municipality made by a vote of its legislative body, or, in any town in which the legislative body is a town meeting, by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, established a deferment program to defer the due date of taxes on real property, personal property, or motor vehicles, or water or sewer rates, charges, or assessments owned by affected employees. Among establishment of a deferment program, a municipality or subdivision thereof shall not charge or collect interest on any tax rate, charge, or assessment, or part thereof that is payable by an affected employee, and which became due during the period when such individual was an effective employee. That, the general thrust of this is February 1, because second half real estate tax bills and supplemental motor vehicle taxes are due on or before February 1. Eligibility shall be determined by the municipality. Each tax rate change, charge, or assessment deferred under a program established pursuant to this section shall be due and payable without interest or penalty, not later than 60 days after the date on which an individual is no longer an effective employee. Therefore, so that the assumption is, once the partial shutdown ends, they would have 60 days to pay back without interest. Otherwise, interest kicks in as if it were normal. So, in conversation with the town attorney this morning, his interpretation is that we in Greenwich have a representative town meeting, as opposed to some of these smaller towns that have a town meeting where anybody can come at any time. We have an elected representative town meeting, therefore, since we have an elected RTM, the Board of Selectmen do not make the determination it would have to go to the RTM. That's his opinion. Questions?
Yeah. No, I was just going to ask, I gather the premise is that there are towns throughout the state where the town meeting is everybody in the town?
Correct.
There are such?
Yes.
Like where?
So, I'll find out for you. But there are. When they have a town meeting, everybody comes, and they just do what they're going to do, but it's not an elected town meeting. It's not an elected, the way the RTM is elected here.
No, I...
I mean, some of these small towns with 3,000 people or 5,000 people. I'll get you that information.
An elector can show, right? Isn't it? They literally sit, and if you're an elector in that town, so, Mr. McLaughlin is here, or... So, Mr. McLaughlin is here, or town attorney. Were you here on this or are you, you here for other?
I'm here for the supplemental...
Okay, so, all right.
So, I, I would, listen, I would rather have the vote go today if we could because getting in on the RTM call Monday and with, with all their committees and whatever is gonna string this thing out. And the idea that I've gotten from conferring with, with a bunch of people in the Connecticut Tax Collectors Association, the towns want to have it on the books before February 1st so that people affected by it can kind of breathe easier.
Two questions, Howard. Number one, if you know, is there, have there been in the past other pieces of legislation which have divined this kind of distinction that you or our town attorney is talking about? In other words, stated differently, are there a number of pieces of state legislation which provide, as this does, that the Board of Selectmen can do it if the town meeting, blah, blah, blah? There are a number?
No, I, I don't, I don't know.
Are there? In other words, I'm wondering, is this the first time this question is arising or is this something that the legislature has done repeatedly over the years? And if so, how we have dealt with it over the years?
Right.
So you don't know?
I do not have that answer.
Okay. Why, again, it's another question, you probably don't know the answer. Why wouldn't the sensible thing to do, at least I'm just speaking for myself, despite the town attorney's questions about how it applies, why isn't the sensible thing for us to approve it and try to get it on the, and belt and suspend it and take it to the RTM on Monday with, with the notion that this board has already approved it? And...
Well, I would, I would, I would say, I don't, I don't know. So, maybe it's, 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 it's the language, it's whether you approve it or you kind of do a sense of the meeting or whatever you would call it. Since you may not actually be able to approve it according to what the town attorney says, at least you endorse it.
Well, I guess my view is, with all due deference to the town attorney, we can approve it. Our approval may not be, if he's right, effective, in which event, the ratification, if I can use that word by the RTM, would legitimize it and make it legal because they can ratify our action. And at that point, it clearly becomes legal.
Well, listen, I'm for, I'm all for your support.
I think we should do that.
I think...
I think we should do that and I think, you know, by happenstance, the meeting was continued on Monday. Maybe it's good happenstance. If this is fairly straightforward and can be put into a one-paragraph synopsis, email it out to everybody and say, look, this has come up as a result of current national circumstances. This is something that frankly will have negligible impact on the town's finances but could have significant benefit to the, I'm gonna say dozen, two dozen if that, people who are federally employed, who live in the town and who own property. I mean, think about it. It could be a handful of people, but it's still...
Whatever it is.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what it is. We're trying to speculate and then we're trying to think, maybe there are people who live in Greenwich who work at the airport as air traffic controllers or TSA agents.
I, I would think without knowing, but I'd be very surprised and disappointed if I were wrong, that this is unanimous view. No one is going to oppose this. How can anyone oppose it?
Right. And I think, again, the analogy is, I, I think it's no loss to the town at all because it's kind of like the theory in a football game. You score the touchdown, but the left tackle held. So if the left tackle hadn't held, you wouldn't have scored the touchdown. These people would have paid the theory. They would have paid their tax on or before February 1st if they had an income, but they didn't. So the town's not going to lose money because in theory, they're gonna pay it a little bit farther down the road, but they will not be penalized.
Yeah.
It's, it's, to me, a no-brainer, as they say.
It's a total no-brainer.
Okay, well, I would move to...
Thank you.
Adopt this legislation with the understanding that while we believe it could be implemented by the Board of Selectmen, that legal will further opine and we will direct it to the RTM moderator and request that he put it on for Monday night's continued meeting.
I would second that and the only thing I would add is, again, is for the town attorney to decide, but either the RTM ought to approve this almost on its consent basis or ratify our actions as they see fit.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So all in favor?
Aye.
And Howard, thank you very much for your presence and research and so forth. Okay, we have... We have one property tax appeal settlement to consider. And for purposes of that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss that item. And if we have any items under, we have no one to interview under nominations, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's really just for that item?
Second.
Without objection. 1104.
Okay, I need a motion to...
So this is a motion to resume public session from the regular Board of Selectmen meeting Thursday, January 24th?
Second.
Without objection. We have under a new business, one property tax settlement to consider, Denholm versus Town of Greenwich. For purposes of consideration, I call upon Ms. Hines to read the proposed settlement.
Okay, this is Del, Delholm, Denholm versus the Town of Greenwich. This is for a reduction in the tax assessment that will be taken as a credit of approximately $9,927, $9,927 against future tax payments. If the plaintiffs were to have prevailed at trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $25,612 plus interest and costs.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, without objection. Under nominations and appointments, we have two items. The first one is to nominate Thomas Patron, who is currently nominated to fill a three-year term on the Board of Human Services beginning on June 1st. The position is open earlier and we'd like him to start, so I'd like to move to nominate Thomas for the position beginning April 1, 2019, ending June 30, 2019, to allow him to start, to fill the vacant period of the current term.
Second.
Okay, without objection. The next item is to act on a member of the Historic District Commission whose term expired in October. We have Eris Christ, a local architect who's served on the Historic District since April of 2013. And his term would begin upon appointment and conclude on October 1st, 2023.
October 31st.
Okay, thank you, 31st.
I would so move.
Second. Without objection. That concludes that business today. We do have to attend to rescheduling a couple of meetings. So right now, we'll take the time to look at the calendar and determine availability. And if we don't have to do, can we do this, can we do this offline?
Well, you approve the schedule for 2019 and typically, we end up going through a motion and a second and a vote to change.
All right, when did, when do we want to move the meetings to?
Well, the first week in February, it's when, the first week, February 4th, that is the beginning of the BET Budget Committee review of the budget. So I don't know how you will feel about scheduling.
I'm at a pocket from the 6:00 in the afternoon all through school vacation week.
Which is the following week.
Probably, I begin to, you know, come back to civilization, which is meaning not, not, not caring for my kids.
Not until Tuesday, the 19th.
19.
Because then the next selectmen's meeting would be February 28th. And we will miss the March RTM call if we don't have a meeting by mid-February, by the 15th.
All right, so we're, are we standing between a rock and a hard place?
In a nutshell.
Is there any way to do anything? Next week or no? Just on nominations, just if we could expedite on the 31st?
That will depend upon availability of candidates. And that's basically less than a week's notice, or just about a week's notice.
Well, I mean, it's up to the guys. I would say if we could do it...
Works for me, I mean, I'm fine.
Works for me.
Yeah. There's that fire recruits in the morning that's at 10. I mean, takes no more than half hour, so...
And then... So would you want to do it at 11:30? Because you have...
11:30 on the 31st?
Yes. So that works for everybody?
So we're just gonna, we're holding a special meeting? Because it is a special meeting. And we're canceling the regular meeting.
Okay, so, would I need two separate motions? So, in conversation with the town attorney this morning, his interpretation is that we in Greenwich have a representative town meeting as opposed to some of these smaller towns that have a town meeting where anybody can come at any time. We have an elected representative town meeting. Therefore, since we have an elected RTM, the Board of Selectmen do not make the determination it would have to go to the RTM.
No, I was just going to ask. I gather the premises that there are towns throughout the state where the town meeting is everybody in the town?
So, I'll find out for you. When they have a town meeting, everybody comes and they just do what they're going to do, but it's not an elected town meeting.